We're ready upstairs? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the Planning and Zoning Board, City of Tarpon Springs for November 17th, 2014. We'll begin with the roll call of the members present. Madam Clerk?
John Giellusis. Niles Hossi.
Didn't hear you, sorry.
Jacob Carr. Al Parker. Anita Protos.
Here.
Merlin Simone.
Here.
Nancy St. Arnold. Chairman Vincent.
Here.
Since we have only four members present at this time, if any applicant wishes to defer their matter, they can request to do so because my understanding is that there's only four members here, an approval would require all four votes. Is that correct?
Your rules actually require a majority vote of those present and able to vote, so you'd need three of four votes in order to pass any motion.
Okay, well...
But you're absolutely right that the applicant does retain the right to defer their application to hearing before a full board in the absence of a full board.
Okay. I thought that there are some matters that require four votes and that if we have a short board, they would be able to do it because they'd sort of have to roll the dice, but...
Yeah, this is Rule 2.3 of your Rules of Procedure, and it says, "A quorum shall consist of four members. An affirmative vote of a majority of those present shall be necessary to pass any motion or adopt any order unless otherwise specified here and/or by law." And there's no applications on our agenda tonight that would require any kind of supermajority or deviation from that rule.
Can you hear out there? Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Daniel. I realize we do have a quorum, so we will begin. The first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes from past meetings. Do I hear motion for the minutes of October 21, 2013?
I'll move with question.
Is there a second? A second to approve. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute. You want a roll call on this one.
I would like for them to check. It said I was absent. I don't remember ever missing a meeting since I've been on the board, and this was from October 21, 2013. I don't know if I had been approved as an alternate and I wasn't notified yet. I don't know what happened. If you'll just look into that for me, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't remember.
The minutes do indicate, Ms. Protos, that you were an alternate member at that time.
But I may not have been notified to be at the meeting, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, that's...
For being absent.
That's possible.
Yeah. Oh, well.
Roll call, please, for the vote.
Niles Hossi?
Yes or no?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Anita Protos?
Yes.
Merlin Simone?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Okay, so the minutes of October 21, 2013 have been approved, subject to verification that Ms. Protos was not present. The next set of minutes is for the meeting on November 18th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second. Any comments, discussion? Roll call, please.
Niles Hossi?
Yes.
Anita Protos?
Yes.
Merlin Simone?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
And the next set of minutes are for the meeting on September 15, 2014. Is there a motion?
So moved for approval.
Give me a second. Anybody jump in?
My second motion.
There's a second. Any discussion by the board? Roll call, vote, please.
Niles Hossi?
Yes.
Anita Protos?
Yes.
Merlin Simone?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Before we have the swearing-in of our... for the quasi-judicial announcement and swearing-in of speakers, we have... I'd like to recognize we have two new members of the board tonight, and, gentlemen, I'd like you to please give us your names carefully so we can be sure to pronounce them right. Niles?
Yeah, my name is Nils. Nils Haza, or Hossi. Thank you, Nils. Welcome to the board. Thank you.
Merlin Seaman.
Thank you, Mer.
Welcome to the board.
Okay, Mr. Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are quasi-judicial proceedings where this board acts in the quasi-judicial capacity. By law, it is this board's function to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the city's Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. This board can only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application and the applicable code sections. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. The parties to this hearing are the applicant and the city. The city is represented by city staff. There may be persons, organizations, or groups that qualify as interveners. Persons or groups that qualify for intervenor status can participate in the hearing as a party. A recognized... excuse me. A recognized intervenor may examine witnesses, present evidence, and make arguments to the board. For a person to be granted intervenor status, the person must demonstrate to the board that he or she will suffer an adverse effect as a result of the quasi-judicial decision, which exceeds in degree that which may be suffered by the general community. Intervener status may be granted to the representative of an organization or group who have a substantial or compelling interest in the matter under consideration if that group can demonstrate that it is prepared to present competent, substantial evidence which would be of significant assistance to the board in making its decision. In a few minutes, the chairperson will give persons, organizations, or groups desiring intervenor status the opportunity to make that request. There is an established procedure which will be followed at this hearing. First, all witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at the hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony in questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant and recognized intervenors will have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff and any city witnesses. The applicant will then present its witnesses and evidence. The city staff and recognized intervenors will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Recognized interveners will then present their evidence and witnesses, and city staff and the applicant will have the opportunity to cross-examine the intervenor's witnesses. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the board, a party's opening statement and presentation is limited to 10 minutes. At that point, we'll proceed to public comment. Members of the public opposing the application will be given the opportunity to present testimony. After all, members of the public opposing the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes of testimony. A member of an organization or group granted intervenor status who testifies as part of the organization or group's presentation forfeits their right to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting. During the public comment portion of the meeting, members of the public present at the hearing may donate their time to a speaker to extend that speaker's time, but in doing so, the person donating the time forfeits his or her right to speak. Each donation shall extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes. In no event shall the speaker's time be extended beyond 10 minutes of total time. Following public comment, the applicant, city staff, and recognized interveners will have an opportunity to present rebuttal evidence and make a closing argument or summary. The applicant will then go first, followed by city staff and any interveners. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the board, a party's closing summary and rebuttal evidence will be limited to 10 minutes each. Following this, the board will consider the matter, a motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. At this point, I would ask for all persons who intend to testify here tonight to please stand and be sworn. I'd ask you to stand and raise your right hand, please.
Any members of the public also that would intend to speak, please stand and raise your right hand.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you've given this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
It may be seated.
Mr. Chairman, you may proceed with the first item, please.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Since we have a couple of new members on the board, before we get started on the first or the next item on the agenda, I just would like to take this opportunity to remind all the members of the board that in quasi-judicial proceedings, we sit as judges and we hear the evidence that's presented, whether it's by city staff or the applicant or the public who testifies before us. During the proceedings, we would have an opportunity to question each of those persons who give testimony before us at the proper times, and I'd ask that you reserve expressing any opinions until when we consider it. After a motion is made, then it's proper for the board, when we deliberate, to go ahead and express opinions based on what you heard and the evidence presented. And so with that, we'll go ahead and begin with the next item on the agenda is Application 14-43, Conditional Use. The applicant is Kozamides. City staff will first give the staff report.
Before I do that, Mr. Chairman, let's ask if there are any persons requesting intervenor status on this application, please.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Is there anyone who wishes to be considered an intervenor for intervenor status with this proceeding, with the Kozamides' application?
And again, for clarification purposes, the parties to the application are the city and the applicant. If you are a person who has a special or substantial interest in the judgment of the board and are not a party, i.e. the city or the applicant, you may request intervenor status on the application, which will give you the same rights to question witnesses and present evidence as that afforded to a party.
Members of the public would still be able to comment at a time for public opinion if you're not an intervenor. You'd still be able to state and give your testimony.
You have... She doesn't know she can come up and speak now she's the applicant.
Right now, we're going to hear first from the city on the Kozamides' application.
All right. Thank you, and good evening. My name's Joshua Langen. I'm trying to make myself heard this evening. The first report here is, just as it says, it's a request for conditional use, approval to serve beer and wine for on-premise consumption, including their patio area. This is located in the Sponge Exchange Mall on Todekanis. Its numbers, 53 and 54. As you can see, the land use designation is there in our Sponge Docks character district in our special area plan, and they have a T5C transx zone designation. The background is, as you might imagine, property is in the Sponge Docks. It's a tourist destination, and we have similar businesses, similar operations, and we have other conditional uses that have been approved to serve beer and wine for consumption on the premise. So this is similar to what you've seen there. With regards to standards for review, you know, conformance with requires the Land Development Code. Operation of a mini-mart with alcohol license is in conformance with the requirements of what we have for our zoning and land development code. It's not within 200 feet of a pre-existing church, not within 200 feet of a school of general education. There's no other specific criteria in our land development code or the SMART code that provide any exceptions related to service of beer and wine other than those stated. You know, additional criteria, proximity to surrounding budding properties, functional proximity. We don't anticipate any negative effects. We don't see how this would negatively affect similar businesses close by in any way because, like I said, they're similar in nature. Be the primary entrance of the business selling alcohol beverages, probably entrances of existing uses. We don't see how one primary entrance is going to interfere with another primary entrance. We're not going to see any overcrowding issues or anything. Secondary entrance to the business, again, no issues with people using entrances. Presence of minors, well, we do have presence of minors in the area. It is a tourist destination, and minors are expected to be present. However, we do not see this as somehow allowing minors to drink alcohol in some illegal manner in any way, so we don't anticipate any issues or problems there. Proposed method of business operation of the alcoholic beverage establishment regarding hours, food service, and similar factors. We don't see any other factors with regards to food service and hours creating any problems here again. They're a mini-mart. They already sell beer and wine to go. They have a patio area. It's in a tourist-used shopping exchange mall, so we don't see anything alarming there. Traffic flow, pedestrian pattern in the area. Again, you're going to have pedestrian flow and travel patterns due to the nature of the business, so we don't see how this is going to disrupt that. And finally, the physical proximity of this with other properties in the area. We're not within the church or the schools, and again, similar businesses, so we don't see any problems there. Moving on to number two. Questions to whether the property use is appropriate to the property in question, compatible with existing planned uses in the area. I've already explained that, you know, we're in a similar situation with other businesses. You know, we're looking at a situation where the restaurant with alcohol license permitting on beer consumption of wine until 12:00 a.m., you know, not later. With regards to consistency, I'm moving on to three. Goals, objectives of the comprehensive plan. It is, you know, promoting tourism and promoting mixed use and basically promoting the sponge area docks in general, so I don't see how it would be contradiction with a comprehensive Conditional use will not result in adverse impact... adverse impacts to environmental historical resources. Do not... does not appear that environmental historical resources will be impacted negatively. Condition use will not adversely affect jointing property values. We don't think so. We think they will enhance property values because it's an expansion of a current business, and its expanded success should lead to success of other similar businesses. Condition use will not adversely impact or exceed capacity of the fiscal ability of the city to provide available public facilities, transportation, water, sewer, et cetera. We do not see how this would create a fiscal burden to the city. And finally, conditional use shall provide for efficient and orderly development, considering the impact upon growth patterns. We don't see any adverse impacts on growth patterns. It's in a designated area that has been part of our long-range planning, and we... the city is equipped to handle the growth of this business. So as you can see, we have relatively few comments. The comment from Planning and Zoning that the... is basically just an approval with explanation of much of what I've just said. The rest are no comments. And so, having said that, the staff recommendation is that applicants' request has met all the review criteria, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. At this time, board members will be able to ask questions of the city staff regarding this application. Ms. Protos, do you have any questions?
I think it's been very well reviewed, and knowing the business down there that they have now, I see no reason not to approve this. These people have been an outstanding business partner to the Sponge Exchange. Restaurants have a patio beer and wine. They even have a bar in there. There's... or was a bar. I don't know if it's still there. But knowing the type of business people Mr. and Mrs. Scandalaris are, I know that there'll be no problems there. They run a very fine business and a very fine establishment that makes Tarpon proud and Sponge Exchange.
Okay, this is the time for asking questions of city staff.
So he... what indications that he gave us, there should be no question as to their ability to have it.
Mr. Seaman, do you have any questions, city staff, on this application?
No, it looks like staff has covered the bases, to me.
Thank you. Mr. Haas, do you have any questions?
No, I think they've covered it quite well. I have one question. It doesn't... at least, I don't see it in the staff report as far as the name of the business, and it looks like from the little map and schematic of where it is, and it may be an old one of the Sponge Exchange, the two units that you referred to in the staff report, it looks like they're two different businesses, and it may be that I just missed something.
I'd ask that we seek some clarification from the applicant on that. I mean, I went down there myself and had a little bit of difficulty with some of the labels and the numbers on the buildings, and, I mean, I was confident enough that we weren't creating an adverse impact, and I got the idea and the general location and vicinity of what was going to happen, but you write a few of the details as how everything is labeled down there. Did, I think, you know, beg some sort of question. I wouldn't mind hearing from the applicant as well.
Okay, I just want... didn't want to see us splitting a license between two different businesses, and it wasn't really clearly identified, but we can clarify that with the applicant. Any other questions at this time from the board for the staff? At this time, the applicant would be welcome to come to the podium and discuss the application. Please state your name and address when you get to the podium, please.
Sephestima Krilos, 502 Wayfair Drive, Tarpon Springs.
Diplo. Your name and address.
Katina Scandalaris, 207 Hope Street.
Okay, you have a time now that you can make a presentation. Tell us a little bit about your business, what you want to do, and why you want to seek this approval.
We've been in business at the Sponge Exchange for nearly 20 years, and we're just looking to expand our operations as the docks... as the dock renovation is going on. And to answer your question, the name of the business is Katina's Mini Market, and it's Suite 5354 because it was two of the sponge cages that was made into one business, one establishment. So the license won't be split into two. It's one business.
Any other comments you want to make? Okay, if you would remain there in case there's questions from the board.
All right.
Okay. At this time, we'll have questions from the board of the applicants.
I just want to make a clarification. That's where the old sponge market used to be, and the numbers on the buildings, they left them that way for historic purposes, so our new planner will know, and they were called Cluvis. And they... when they designed the Sponge Exchange, when the Papas's bought it, one of the agreements was so that we could keep our historic designation, was to leave those numbers like that on the building. So if there's ever a question, you can go into the old map of the Sponge Exchange. You'll see everyone had one little building, and we didn't divide it that way, so historic purposes would stay there.
Thank you, Ms. Protos. Any other questions for the applicant?
I do. What was the numbers again?
53 and 54.
Okay. Mr. Seaman, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Mr. Haas, do you have any further questions?
No, that's enough for me.
One question, is this a restaurant? You said it's a mini-market. Is it a restaurant or just a...
It's a mini-market. We do wine tastings, and some people ask to be served a glass of wine. This way, we'll be able to serve them a glass of wine as they're resting between shopping and enjoying the sights.
But as consumption on premises, they won't be able to walk around with that outside your premises?
No, no.
Any other questions for the applicant from the board? Thank you very much. You can have a seat. At this time, would any members of the public like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, are there any members of the public that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, to declare the public portion of the meeting closed. It's now time for the board members to consider a motion and then to discuss the motion and deliberate.
So moved for approval, Application 1443.
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve Application 1443?
Mr. Chairman, let me jump in here real quick, just because we have some new members. To be clear with the new members, you're moving to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners who will ultimately make the final decision. I just wanted to be clear on that because we have new members.
Thank you, yes. This is an advisory board, so our recommendation is not a final decision. It's... that's up to the Board of Commissioners, but we send it one way or the other to them from here. Any questions or discussion by the board on the motion? Roll call, vote, please.
Niles Hossi?
Yes.
Anita Protos?
Yes.
Merlin Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Application 14-46. It's a site plan approval for Windrush North 3. At this time, we'll first hear from the staff on the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd see if we have any interveners who intend to...
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any persons or organizations that wish to request status as an intervener in this application? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and present with the staff report, please.
Thank you. Chairman Vincent, my name's Dave Healy with Calvin Giordano and Associates, acting as a consultant and advisor to your staff here with the city, the Planning and Zoning Division's staff. This is an application for site plan approval for Windrush North 3. It is a proposed 10-unit condominium project that completes an infill for the existing Windrush development. It is located on a little over half an acre, but part of the larger 4.6 acres attributable to Windrush North 3. The subject parcel is now classified on the land use plan as residential urban and zoned RM 7.5. Some of the surrounding districts that are shown in your exhibits are residential low and residential medium, zoned R100 and RM 15 respectively. The simple description on page two of your staff report is that it is a proposed 10-unit development on a vacant remaining parcel, part of the previously developed Windrush project. The site plan consists of two buildings. The site plan is attached as an exhibit, eight units in one building and two units and a clubhouse in the second building. Relative to its location, it adjoins the sunny land on the Gulf subdivision to the north, the existing parking for the Windrush project to the south, the developed portions of Windrush 3, Windrush to the west, and Seaside Drive to the east. There are altogether in the Windrush project some 17.14 acres, including the 4.61 acres that are the subject of this application, including the additional units here. There are 108 existing units. With the proposed 10, there'll be 118 units, which will yield a density just under seven units an acre, consistent with the existing RM 7.5 zoning. We point out that a portion of the western edge of the property is designated in the AE FEMA Zone at an elevation of about 12 feet, but the remainder of the property is all above that, and no building will occur in the AE Zone with a minimum first-floor elevation at 13 and 1/2 feet. Parking will be provided for these additional units at 1.75 spaces per unit for 19 spaces, including one new handicap space to the south of the site for the building. of the site for the buildings themselves. Again, the attached exhibits identify the site plan, its location, the surrounding zoning and land use plan designations. The review criteria for a site plan include looking at the comprehensive plan and zoning. It is consistent with the current future land use plan designation of residential urban. They are not requesting a change to the plan nor to the zoning, which is the RM 7.5. We've also looked at some of the specific policies in the comprehensive plan and cited a few of them here that were particularly relevant. We've identified from the land use element, in particular, policy 2.4.2 that talks about encouraging infill development on vacant properties, compact growth contiguous to existing developed areas. And that's exactly what this is. It's a remnant piece that is being developed to complement the remainder of the project that preceded it. In addition, we did note there are several policies that speak to pedestrian mobility, encouraging pedestrian access and walkability. Overall, in the city plan, we've noted those because one of the conditions we've recommended with respect to the application is that a sidewalk be added in the area we've identified. And we'll reference that when I get to the recommendation itself. There are three specific criteria under section 210.03 of the code when reviewing a site plan, and those are that first, it be consistent with a comprehensive plan. We believe it is. Second, that it be consistent with the zoning and land development code, and we believe it is. And thirdly, that it will be consistent with all of the city's concurrency management requirements for infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater and so forth. And those concurrency requirements will in fact all be met. The technical review committee did review this on a couple of occasions and determined that the application was complete and was ready to be forwarded to the planning board, planning and zoning board for your review. For those reasons, staff is recommending that the site plan be approved, subject to the noted condition on page four of the report. And that is that the revision, a revision of the site plan be made to extend the sidewalk along the south property line from in front of the club room to along an east, the east property line paralleling Seaside Drive to the north. Now, you will note in the technical review committee comments that we had some discussion about the sidewalk. Because Seaside Drive is in fact not a public street, we determined that in the end it would be advantageous to have the sidewalk there simply for access to what would amount to the adjoining right-of-way or at least the opportunity as well as to get to the middle school, which isn't too far distant. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to try and answer any questions you have of me.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will entertain questions from the board of city staff regarding the staff report, the application. Ms. Portis, do you have any questions?
Yes, in looking through this, Dave, what about, they don't put fire escapes anymore on these buildings, do they?
I'm sorry?
They don't put fire escapes anymore on these buildings. They just use the regular steps?
There, there's no requirement for that with the elevation.
There's no requirement for that. Because looking at the drawing, I didn't see anything and I felt.
Well, it will have to meet all of the city's building code, obviously, for entrance and exit.
But just looking at this picture, it's just the steps of the balcony.
And you may want to ask the applicant about those details of the elevation. They've included them so that you could see and understand what the buildings will look like and their relationship to each other and to the adjoining properties, which I'm sure is of interest to those that live there.
Well, it is a nice development out there now. That was the only thing I, question I had.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Portis. Mr. Seaman, do you have any questions of city staff?
No questions.
Mr. Haas?
Yeah, I do. This site that's right here, first off, how old is the, the existing buildings?
I don't know the answer to that. I'll have to ask the applicant. I assume, I assume they know or maybe some of the other staff do, but I don't know.
The reason why I ask is because it was a practice years ago to dump trash in an area that wasn't going to be used. Has this site been actually checked out to see if there was anything underneath?
I don't know whether there's been an environmental assessment, but I assume so. I think this was part of that larger site. If you look at the land use plan and the zoning designations on the property, it was all designated for the multifamily use and it looks to be.
So were, so, so were several other places.
Yes, sir.
But, you know, it was a practice, I'm a general contractor, been here for a while. And I know years ago before building codes, it was a great idea to just dump all your construction trash. And that's caused a lot of these housing problems today, especially on large developments like this. So that's just curious?
Sure, well, let's, let's ask the applicant. I don't know the answer to that. It's a fair question. And I assume that they have some understanding. I think their architect and engineer are here and perhaps can answer more specifically.
Any other questions, city staff? Thank you, Mr. Healy.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening, my name is David DeBau. I live at 2951 Wentworth Way in Tarpon Springs.
If you want to move that microphone a little bit closer, you're pretty tall and maybe that can, we can hear you better.
Would you like me to repeat that?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is David DeBau. I live at 2951 Wentworth Way in Tarpon Springs.
My name is Gary Boucher, Ozona Engineering. Offices at 1095 Indiana Avenue in Palm Harbor.
Thank you.
Any questions or would you like to know a little bit about us?
If you want to give us just a brief overview to supplement what city staff, Mr. Healy just said, but also you heard some of the questions, if you want to address those.
Yeah, I can, we're going to do soil testing. We do soil testing before we build anything. The buildings, as you know, we're going up. There's two units in each building. We want to make sure that the soil is adequate to, to build on. So we will have some soil testing done. And we're a very high energy efficient builder. Our, we've been building for many years. Our general contractor is a gentleman by the name of Gary Tyler. He's been building in this area, excuse me, for about 30 years. Our niche, so to speak, is a very high energy efficient, low maintenance type of a building. We use ice and heat insulation. The windows we use, everything we use is focused on that high energy efficiency. In this particular project, we plan to put elevators in as well. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at that. We also have to put a fire suppression system in each unit so that they will have sprinklers in them as well inside the units.
Okay, at this time, if any board members have questions of the applicants? Ms. Portis?
The reason I asked about the fire escapes is of this for the, the recent happenings in Tampa and St. Pete with condos catching on fire and apartments and people having a hard time getting out. But I can see from your plan, they can jump from a balcony.
Yeah, and we do have the fire suppression system that's in the units as well, the sprinkler systems inside the units.
Well, those in Tampa didn't work very well because, you know, they've lost everything they had in a hard time getting beat by. It's just a safety factor that I look for, for the residents.
I understand.
And, and our colleague asked a very valid, very good question about the property with them putting, dumping their trash and covering it up so it starts sinking again.
Yeah, we're building in Dunedin. We're building in Palm Harbor and, and Osmar. And we're doing a, a big apartment project in Ruskin. And we do soil testing wherever we go before we do anything. Because we don't know whether there's, even if there isn't construction to be, there may be organics that are present, which would cause the voids that I know you're concerned with and so are we. So we do testing before we build anything.
Mr. Seaman, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No.
Mr. Haas, any further questions?
No, sir.
I have a question about the, the renderings here. Is this compatible or is it the same design basically from the exterior? The, the looks and view of this the same as the rest of the project? I haven't been down that way in a long time, but.
Yeah, we are, part of our, we have the president of the HOA here as well in support. And we work with them hand in hand in the development of the renderings and the design so that it fits in with what's, what was built there previously. So from a design standpoint, the buildings are going to look similar. The interiors are significantly different. We, they're updated and we've done things with elevators and with courtyards and some of the areas to take advantage of what would be more customary to this market today. But as far as the consistency in the look from building to building, there's buildings there currently, some have garages, some don't. Not every building's exactly the same. So the look of the buildings are consistent.
Okay.
How old is this development?
How old are we?
No, the development is there now.
Oh, it was, it was started in 85 and I believe. When was the last building built, do you remember? Okay, so between the mid and the late 80s is.
Well, we thought it was big time in Tarpon when it came.
I'm sorry?
We thought it was big time in Tarpon.
It's beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful out there.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you, sir. If you want to have a seat.
All right, thank you.
At this time, any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application? If you'd come forward, please, and give us your name and address before you begin your testimony.
Tom Hood, 358 Windrush Loop in Tarpon Springs.
Thank you, Mr. Hood.
I am the president of the mass, of the board for Windrush III. And I, we are, I just wanted to express first of all that we are very excited about this project. We think it's going to significantly add value to our community. We are in full support and have worked on the architectural aspect of it to make sure first it is in conformity with our community. We think this particular design that they've come up with is, it gives us a little bit, something more unique in the community. So the, the way they've designed the current code and standards, I think is really good. So we are in 100% in favor of the development. We think it's going to help our property values. We're excited about the clubhouse design, which we've never had there. This was always something planned in the community. To my knowledge, there was never any dumping or anything on that lot. It, it has always been held as a reserve for future development. The future took a long time, but it seems to be here now. So we're very happy. I'd be happy to entertain any questions, but just wanted to let you know from our standpoint, the board is in 100% support on this development.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. If you'll remain there for any questions from the board members. At this time, Mr. Haas, do you have any questions?
No, sir, I don't.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Portis? Thank you very much, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public speak, that wish to speak in favor of the application? Any members of the public here that wish to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing portion of the meeting to be closed. It is now appropriate for the board to discuss the matter after receiving a motion.
Would move for approval.
Second.
Now, there were some recommendations by staff. Mr. Seaman, do you wish to include the condition that I think was on page four of the staff report as part of your motion?
Yes, and I, I guess we should have asked the applicant, shouldn't we? Are they in agreement with that if we put that condition on the approval?
So is that reservation, that, that condition part of the motion, Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Portis, and your second?
Fine with that, yes.
Any discussion among the board members? I'd like to say I'm happy to see that the homeowners association does approve of this. So one of my concerns was, you know, the appearance and certainly they're in a, in a better position than, than I or anyone else on the board to, to review the architectural renderings and to make an opinion on that. So I'm, I'm glad to see that they are in favor of that. We'll go ahead and take a vote, roll call.
Nels Hassy?
Yes.
Anita Protos?
Yes.
Merlin Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Congratulations.
And the application 14-56 has been approved with the reservation set for, the condition set for, on page four of the application. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is application 14-09 Cypress Trails of Tarpon Springs for a site plan approval. And we'll have city staff make the staff report.
As you know, this application has, has gone through TRC a few times, also under the name of Jasmine something or other. Tonight, I have, I have prepared the staff report with advisement from our consultant, Mr. Dave Healy, as well as reading some of the minutes, as well as reading previous TRC comments. So it, at some point, I may have to refer to fellow staff in order to maybe perhaps answer all questions or to deliver full answers. However, I'm, I'm going to present it. And like I said, at some point, I may need some additional input from staff during the presentation or after. To start with, we're looking at a, what is basically a 95 lot subdivision located along Jasmine Avenue. Tonight, we are here to consider a site plan for 36 lots. It's phase one, it's delineated on your plan and that's what these rolled up things are in front of you. The whole property is 16 and a half acres. There's, there's a couple of different zonings. The part that's being developed for multifamily is RM 10. There's also some LC limb conservation, but that's covered by the pond you see there, the detention pond. So we don't, we don't have any zoning conflicts right now. So it's TRC review and comments. As you can see from previous TRC comments, there have been some. And the fact that this is going, a site plan that's going to be followed by a subdivision plat review grants some leeway with regards to which comments can be and should be fully addressed now and which comments can or should be fully addressed at time of subdivision. The reason I say that is because it, it, the section where, section 210 where site plan review and contents for site plan are listed, there is a disclaimer there saying the planning director may choose which, which are adequate and which are feasible and which are essentially necessary at this time. However, having said that, obviously, if, if planning board has a different opinion as to which site plan elements are needed now, that is of course your prerogative. So what I am presenting is a list of site plan requirements that have been met and a list of site plan requirements that staff is confident can be reviewed and resolved at the subdivision plat review process. But as I said, the board is free, free to make its decision upon what it wants to see now and what the board would like to see when it's, when it's time to review the subdivision plat. So just, just to clarify that one more time, approving a site plan does not approve a final subdivision plat. They are two separate items. So a site plan is a part and parcel and there is some leeway in between what is approved as a site plan and what gets approved during subdivision plat. So approval, and it says so in the code, approval of a site plan does not automatically mean you have subdivision site approval. So having said that. So, having said that, um, basically, I've quoted two-ten site plans, basically shows you where, where our language for having a site plan comes from. Site plan contents, section two-ten oh-two is, is very relevant here. You'll see, section two-ten point oh-two subsection B, there's a list of thirty or so site plan requirements that need to be included. What I have done is taken out the ones that have not been met. So, if, if it's not listed here, that site plan element has indeed been included to staff's satisfaction. So, I'll, I'll go over these with you just to be clear on them. What has not been addressed by site plan, and again, what we anticipate to be addressed during final subdivision plat approval, is, um, we don't, I don't think we have all the location of proposed fire hydrants, utilities and, and all that. I think we're very close on this, but I think there might be a few issues with fire hydrants on that. Seven, a tree survey with overlay of proposed development indicating size type and location of trees to remain. We do have a tree survey. However, we have not had the ability to site verify everything. So, at this point in time, I cannot give you a hundred percent that that is a hundred percent. I've been told that at first review, it is complete. But I want to give our engineers the caveat to get out there and field verify, which is a lengthy process before I can just cross that item off the list. Eleven, table of land use showing total area plus breakdown has not been included. Lot dimensions including curve data, it's not been included. Proposed phasing plan, uh, we have a line showing where the phases, what's phase one and phase two, but we don't have a time schedule for when phase two is anticipated to begin or anything like that. Twee, uh, sorry, twenty, required parking calculations have not been included. Location and type of site lighting have not been included. Descriptions of maintenance of common facilities, not been included. Location, type, height and size of proposed signs have not been included. That would be like the subdivision entrance sign. Again, I'll simply repeat that, that these are items that we feel that, that can be resolved at the time of subdivision review. C, I just wanted to reiterate what I said, um, I'm sorry. C is, is, is yet more descriptions of what needs to go in a site plan. One of them is being a landscaping plan and that, that illustrates what I'm talking about with regards to not, everything has to be done at site plan. It, this language right out of our code says landscaping plan to be submitted and approved after final subdivision plan. So, this isn't even after site plan and before subdivision. This is after site plan and before COs are issued. So, that sort of gives you an indication that indeed, just because it's, it's listed, it doesn't necessarily have to be fully completed by a time of site plan approval. Traffic impact study completed as required. Comprehensive plan review, I've, I've picked out the elements of the comprehensive plan that I thought were relevant. You know, we're looking to ensure new development, redevelopment is consistent with the public facility needs. Uh, this, this plan does that. It, it puts multifamily use where it needs to be. It, it, it uses infrastructure where there is existing infrastructure. Uh, again, this is not contributing to sprawl. It uses existing roadways, which we're encouraging. It basically meets goal two, objective two. Housing element, goal one, provide a mix of adequate housing. That's exactly what this proposal does. If we go through this, uh, basically, we'll see that it does meet a, a lot of the requirements that have been laid out here in the housing capacity and, uh, you know, handicap accessibility, that sort of thing. We will continue to, to enforce site plan review, et cetera. So, we think it meets the intention of comprehensive land use plan, which is to put medium density residential in the right place, which is exactly what this does. Level service of analysis, this is another part of the staff analysis, another part of just what we have to do to review a development proposal in regards to our code. Uh, and these are some of the things that have been included in the, in the staff reports traditionally. If, if you go through them, you'll see, um, in some of these instances where we have our concurrency requirements, again, that's the sort of thing that, that is probably better off being addressed prior to final subdivision plat approval. The reason I say that is, the, the point of this code is to make sure that we have enough assurances that the right things are being done at the right time without overburdening the applicant. Because what happens is, if we come in with a conceptual plan or a site plan that they have spent tens of thousands of engineering dollars on and something changes, um, like a street layout or something like that, then they're out all that money and they have to redesign all that engineering. So, if there's an opportunity for them to prepare at least enough information to keep us satisfied and changes are made, then they can spend the big engineering dollars when it's kind, time to do, uh, final subdivision plat review. So, that's kind of the intent of trying to stage the right requirement at the right time. And currency is an example of that. Uh, once this board and the Board of Commissioners figures out exactly what the site plan needs to look like and what the final subdivision plan really needs to look like, that's a better time to start doing a more detailed engineering analysis and capacity analysis and, and some other things like that. Drainage, uh, the, the drainage is act, is, is a, we have enough information to know that, that what they're putting there with the drainage basin is adequate to do what they're saying it's going to do. Again, we feel like we're going to need some more stormwater calculations prior to final subdivision plat review. Same with solid waste, recreation. Transportation, we're good. We're happy with transportation impact. And, um, again, certificate and currency development determination, we think that can, that can be done prior to subdivision plat review. Staff recommendation is that the site plan has a number of, uh, it has some complicating factors to it. It, it's difficult to analyze. We do feel like it meets the comprehensive plan. There, there are some examples where, uh, there were some issues that, that we need to be resolved through variance and perhaps right-of-way vacation. So, we know there are some factors that, that don't currently comply with land use plant, with the, the land use development code, but that can be fixed through variance. And I'll continue to read that, uh, you know, once these variances have been met and standards have even either been met by the time a final subdivision plat rolls around or through a variance, uh, we do feel like it, it's, it's going to meet the plan or it's going to meet the land development code. Uh, for these reasons, we recommend the site plan be approved with some stipulations. Revised site plan to provide for platted lots to achieve the minimum lot depth requirement a hundred feet. Uh, there are some extenuating circumstances on that and I think I'd like Dave to explain that, uh, especially if you have questions as to, there's, there's a question of how the applicant would like to measure the lots with regards to extending lot lines to the center of the road in order to gain a longer lot depth. Uh, again, that's, I think that's, that's a conversation that happened before I was brought on board and I'd like people involved in that conversation to explain that a little better than I can. Number two, uh, the applicant does have a, a sidewalk variance in to the Board of Adjustment for a small part of a sidewalk around the clubhouse and, uh, staff has written a recommendation to approve that, so we don't see any problems with that. Of course, it's up to the Board of Adjustment. Three, subject to city commission approval of a vacation of the portion of Pine Street, some port of, some part of Pine Street needs to be vacated for this to occur. Again, staff doesn't see a problem with that at this time. Subject to completion approval of all required road utility improvements for each respective phase of the project prior to approval of building permits. A bit of a clarification there, by building permit, we mean certificate of occupancy. Some things can be started, some things can be done without having all the utilities plans approved, but obviously, they can't get a CO until the utilities are, are brought up to the standards of our engineering department and their approval. And finally, uh, subject to provision approval of all other code requirements as referenced in the staff report. And I'll just repeat again that, yes, there are inconsistencies and, yes, we have some items that need to be resolved, but at this point, we feel like the site plan meets the requirements of the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan and that any outstanding details can be resolved when we review this for final subdivision plat. So, unless you want to, unless Dave wants to add anything here, I, I'll give him that opportunity here.
I'm not sure I can add a whole lot except to try and maybe simplify it. And, and what Josh has said is, it meets, it is consistent with a comprehensive plan, the current plan designation. It is consistent with the current. It is consistent with the current future land use plan designation. It is consistent with the current zoning. It is a complicated project and there are lots of details. We've worked with Mr. Lindiakos and Mr. Conrad for months now, trying to understand those and enumerate them and what we've tried to do is frankly, find a way to get to yes pending resolution of some of those remaining issues. What we've pointed out in the staff report, and I think it's important for the planning board to understand, there have already been variances granted. There was a variance granted with respect to the setback, the buffer required from the wetland. There's a significant wetland, two wetlands on the property and that variance was applied for and appropriately granted or duly granted by the Board of Adjustment. There was a setback to the rear lot line for certain of the lots based on their, the available depth to those lots and, and that variance was granted. The reference that Josh made to condition number one with respect to our specific recommendation is that, that it's proposed that the streets be private. As delineated on the site plan, there's not sufficient lot depth to meet the hundred-foot minimum lot depth. What the applicant has proposed to do is to plat the lots to the center line of the street in effect. So, the lot would run from the center line of the street, a portion of the front of that lot, the forwardmost portion would be within an easement, the right-of-way easement. That's available should the board choose to do it. The other option is a conditional use that would vary the lot depth based on the way it's shown at present. So, those are the kind of details we've tried to work through and, and explain to you. It is subject to a, and a further variance. It's to be heard Wednesday night by the Board of Adjustment on the sidewalk. Obviously, the city commission will need to deal with the vacation of Pine Street. Um, that's up to the city commission to deal with or not. So, what we've tried to do is, is get to the point where this could move forward, subject to those specific limitations and conditions. And if I can elaborate on that or try and explain any of those further, I'll be glad to try and do it.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Uh, at this time, we'll take questions from the board for city staff.
Mr. Healy?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm having problems with this right now. I'm having problems with the lot line to the street. I'm having problems, uh, uh, in my mind to approve this with all the issues that are coming up with this development. Things can fall through the cracks. Boards can change. Planning people can change. Things can get lost. I have never, in the years that I've served in the city, worked with a plan like this. I have never worked with something with all these issues without a site plan coming in front of us, not a site plan, but the information, everything intact. I feel and hear a little, I don't want to use the word negative, but we're not ready. We're not ready with this. There's too many things in here that have to come up. I'm looking for words that, that explain how I feel to say we are ready, everything's been met. This is piecemealing.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm getting to that, sir. I just feel this is a negative, uh, issue in front of us and I don't feel comfortable with it. Unless you can show me, uh, things are, are explained a little more for my comfort, I'm not comfort, comfortable with what's come up here to us tonight.
Ms. Protos, I understand that.
There's too many issues out there that need to be taken care of first. I hear too much negative right now and feel too much negative on this one.
I'm trying not to be negative, but I'm trying to be forthright and tell you, yes, there are. There are remaining issues to be dealt with. Uh, there have been some of those issues resolved through the variance process. There remain some others that Josh has alluded to in the staff report.
I understand that.
And it is ultimately up to the, uh, planning and zoning board to be comfortable. And so, I'm not here to advocate that you, uh, do anything but use your best judgment in determining whether this site plan meets the appropriate tests to go forward for approval. Now, I do think before you reach a conclusion, one way or another, you should hear from the applicant and he may be able to explain some of those things to your satisfaction. But we've simply tried to lay them out as best we see them and understand them in fairness to both the board and the applicant.
Well, the fairness is to the city too because.
Absolutely.
There's too many variables here. I, I don't.
I understand your concern.
I'll be glad to listen, but.
Any other questions, Ms. Protos?
Not at this time, maybe later.
Mr. Seaman, you have questions of the city staff?
I, I have a question, probably first for legal staff, actually. I think I have a conflict of interest on this one. I, I have done some consulting work related to this project and, and am currently doing some. Uh, so, I, it's, my question is, do I need to recuse myself on this item?
Yeah, I, I mean, I can, I can make a recommendation to you. I can't tell you whether to recuse yourself or not. Uh, you've done consulting on this project specifically?
Yes.
Uh, do you anticipate doing future consulting on the project?
Yes.
Yeah. My recommendation for you would be to recuse yourself from vote simply because you may experience a pecuniary gain as a result of this project.
The, the second part of the, of my question then is, do, do I just not participate in the, in the vote or do I also not participate in discussion?
Uh, you certainly need to recuse yourself from the vote. Whether you choose to discuss is really, uh, within your purview. My recommendation would be to recuse yourself entirely so as not to, um, influence the other members of the board in their vote.
Okay.
There's also a form you need to get from the clerk in order to, to fill out. If she doesn't have it, I'll provide it for you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that form needs to be filed within ten days of when you get it from the clerk, a conflict of interest form.
Okay.
Okay. So, for the record, you've recused yourself from this item on the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Hawes, questions of the city staff?
Yes, sir, I do, several. Um, one, I'm, I'm curious if they want a variance on how to measure the lot. Does that mean they're going to measure it like the televisions, a corner to corner? Or, you know, how, how, how is that being measured? That's a question that I have. You also said that they wanted to measure the lot from the center of the street. Does that mean then that the person who buys this house will be responsible for some of the maintenance of that street?
That's certainly, let me try and ask the first question first. In terms of how they measure the lot, it is currently, as shown, measured based on the defined lot line and the problem there is the lot is not deep enough. It doesn't meet the hundred-foot minimum lot depth. So, what they have proposed to do is redraw that line to the center line of the street, which would give them the minimum hundred-foot depth and in effect, the right-of-way easement that would encompass the street. And in effect, the right-of-way easement that would encompass the street would include part of that lot. They haven't told us precisely how that street will be maintained, but I would assume there'd be a property owners association that will be responsible for the street. How that is differentiated between the property owner that hypothetically owns part of that street and the association is unclear to me. The applicant would have to address that.
I also see that there are several, as you pointed out, several things that aren't finished, such as sidewalks. I noticed that the fire department said there wasn't enough room to turn around on one of the streets. The streets were too narrow. My question is, we're here just to say if we approve the site plan, we're not really asking questions about, are they going to do the sidewalk? Are they going to do that? That's really none of our business at this point. Is that correct?
No, sir. You can ask whatever questions you want.
But that has nothing to do with our decision then, is that correct? I mean, that really doesn't, all we're here to do is just say, this is a subdivision that we think should move forward, but we have no say-so really as far as the sidewalks, the setbacks, the road width, the, all the other things. That's going to be at a, at several other boards coming up. I'm trying to understand my role.
Sure, of course. And it's your first meeting, this is almost unfair to you. But your options are threefold under the code. You can recommend approval of the site plan as it is. You can recommend denial, or you can recommend approval with whatever changes you deem appropriate. And that recommendation, whichever of those three things or some combination of them, would go forward to the City Commission with your recommendation. So yes, you have free rein to suggest revisions or stipulations to the site plan. That's part of your appropriate advisory role in reviewing it.
Okay. Then I'll wait to see what our applicant has to say.
Mr. Vincent?
Thank you, Ms. Hawes.
Thank you.
Mr. Healy, since you're the one who addressed the lot line issue, that is a concern to me and I'm wondering, is it legal to have a lot line going into the middle of a street? I mean, is there a legal issue? Of course, maybe that's for Mr. Daniel to address, but, I mean, it sounds pretty creative, but I'm just wondering if that's something that's, how it jives with their city code.
Your city code specifically excludes the term easement from right-of-way. So if I understand Mr. Healy correctly, the applicant, and certainly they'll have the opportunity to speak and let us know for sure, is wanting to extend into the roadway that presently exists as a right-of-way, is that correct? No. It's the, it's the internal private street that they're creating over which there'd be, I'm describing it as a right-of-way easement, an access easement for those lots that will access this private street. And the proposal is to extend the lot line to the center of that private street.
Is there any requirement that in subdivisions, that the streets be dedicated to the public use?
I don't believe so. I believe the opportunity is to have a public or private street. In either event, it has to meet the city standards for public street, I believe is the requirement. So whether it's private and privately maintained or public, it needs to meet the same standard as a public street.
Thank you.
For all streets. Yeah, I mean, and Mr. Vincent, you probably is, you can answer this as well. From a legal perspective, I think at this juncture, we'd be talking about hypotheticals. It's really, it really depends on how it's proposed to be done. I think the, you know, to me, when you say lot line, you're talking about the lot line of the, of the property owned and fee by, by the applicant here. We're getting a little bit, without an application before us to evaluate, it's a little hard for me to say. Can it be done legally? I think probably theoretically it could be, but without an application in front of us, it's really hard to evaluate.
Thank you.
Any other questions of the city staff and the board?
Theoretically, theoretically leaves it open with question to me, you know? And I need to know, do we have any more private streets and developments in Tarpon? I think that was changed.
We have private streets.
Yeah, if you're within the city limits, you're a taxpayer, you cannot hold on to a street and say, it's private. That was my understanding.
No.
The legal aspect of that.
You're suggesting that a street can't be developed in Tarpon that is not a publicly-owned and maintained street?
Within a subdivision, can they do that?
I don't believe that's part of the subdivision code. I don't have any internet access tonight because of the Wi-Fi problem, but I don't believe that's part of our code. No. You can, if, again, if approved, create a private street.
If approved, no.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Any other questions for city staff? Thank you very much. This time, we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Manuel Lindiakos. I live at 773 Ankle at Landings Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm the owner of the property and this is.
And I'm William Conrad. I'm a planning consultant and I think we can answer some of your questions and that it'll bring kind of a comfort level. And I appreciate, you know, the concerns that you have, but I think, just to give you a little bit of history to, I should have given my address, 3617 Town Avenue, Newport, Ritchie, William Conrad. We started this process with the previous planning staff and we went through the process. We laid out the plans. There was general consensus and agreement on how we would move forward. There were some issues. These weren't impediments that, you know, were overwhelming. We addressed them. Staff was in agreement. We moved forward. In addition to that, we have had four meetings with Development Review Committee where all of these issues have been thrashed out and addressed. And sometimes I just, let's just pick the one issue that seems to be in front of us right now, and that's the question of the lot lines. The point is, is that what we're proposing was agreed to by previous staff and it made sense because what you have to keep in mind is there's a difference between a hypothetical line that somebody sees and the reality of what that lot is going to look like. The lots that are going to be created are going to have adequate, are going to have obviously curbs, are going to have adequate space for easements for utilities, are going to have adequate space for front lawns and parking, and adequate space to accommodate the houses themselves, which, you know, the units themselves, and adequate space for backyards. So you have to keep that in mind. The other thing you have to consider is that there are certain elements on this site such as the large, large open space area. Now, there's no line drawn in the back of the lot. There's all this large open area of open space that also constitutes not officially, I mean, in terms of a line, but that in reality, that the owner has use of and enjoyment of. So I think the question of functionality has to be addressed in reality versus kind of a hypothetical or conceptual. And I think those are the realities that have led staff to agree to the site plan that's before you. That's just one area. But I want you to know, and I have to thank staff because they were very diligent in working through these issues. So all of these issues have been dealt with by all of the different departments and addressed, as I say, through these four meetings. So in a sense, the question is, is, the big question is, are you going to rely on staff's recommendation, the work that does by staff, or are we going to start, you know, in square one? I think these are issues that you have staff, you pay staff for to address. And I think that's why we're basically saying, look, these things have been addressed. There are some issues that still have to be addressed, but that we concur with staff's recommendation to move forward. So that was our thinking. Now, I have a doctorate in the planning field, so that's my background. Manuel, in addition to be the owner, is a civil engineer, so, you know, we're happy to address any questions that you have.
I'd like to just say that, I'd like to thank the staff too because before they came on board, Renee and Rodney, we had gone through two TRC meetings. We had everything addressed. We were supposed to be on the August docket, okay? The plans are engineered properly. We have our SWIFT mud plans, a permit in hand. And then the two people that were working on this project left. I don't know why or whatever. So here I am, ready to start in August, okay? And they got thrown into this equation, okay? And granted, they had a longer plate and I wanted to start in August. I'm ready to start, but we had to work through their concerns, which I thought we did. We went back to the TRC not once but twice, okay? The new planner who just came here a couple of months ago or a month ago, I don't know what plans he's looking at, but the plans that are submitted there are approved by SWIFT mud. We've addressed everything. The tree survey's been in there. The fire hydrants are in there properly. All these things have been addressed, not one or two, but four TRC meetings, okay? So he comes out and it sounds like my plans are a bunch of hogwash. Those plans are 100% complete. They wanted me to put sidewalks in. I put sidewalks all the way around the inside of the project. I didn't say anything about that. I could have fought that. I didn't do that. They wanted me to put Miami curb. I put Miami curb. The only thing that I'm asking now, which is going to be heard on Wednesday, and they don't have a problem with it, there's about 15-foot a sidewalk that's on the one side of the clubhouse. There's no room for it, but I've got sidewalks across the street and the building department doesn't have a problem with having the people that park there. They could walk across the street to come to the clubhouse or they can just walk in the street, okay? Why the city hasn't looked at the tree plan that I submitted and paid for and had done, it's been there for over a year, it's beyond me. They got rid of that guy, okay? But he had my head spinning too, so I can understand how your head's spinning. Here I am coming, asking this planning board to move me along and it sounded like the whole plan screwed up. It's not. And Mr. Healy will get up here and tell you it's not. Otherwise, he would have never put us in front of you and wouldn't be recommending approval, okay? Those are complete plans. I got the sewer in there. They wanted me to increase the force main. I did that. They wanted me to increase the lift station pump. I did that, okay? It's all, it's a private subdivision. It's not, it's not even a subdivision. It's a private development. You're allowed to have private roads in a private development, okay? I can put the property line wherever I want. There's going to be an easement that the homeowners association is going to take control of, where they're going to be responsible for all of the maintenance and repairs of all of the infrastructure in there. The city isn't going to have to worry about nothing except their meter out there at the front, what we're tying in. They don't have to worry about the roads. They don't have to worry about the lift station. They don't have to worry about the pavement. They don't have to worry about nothing, okay? The real reason why we decided to put the, I'll be honest with you, the reason why we decided we'd just go ahead and put the property line at the middle of the road was because they wanted, nothing against them, but if I were to come back and ask the appropriate, which I already submitted permits to ask to move it to the property line, follow me? The one hearing that we had with that little setback and the sidewalk waiver, that was back in June, no, or May, which they gave us approval. June, we were supposed to have these other hearings for the sidewalk that I'm not, that I'm finally going to get to hear next week, this week on Wednesday. And then we're supposed to have the hearing for the, move the lot line back, non-conforming lot signs at the same time. But what happened? Renee quit and the other one quit and I was stuck here holding the bag. You follow me? I could show you the paperwork where this stuff was already on schedule, ready to go. You follow me? And I've been biting the bullet here. It's now, what, December? It's September, October, November, December. So I said, look, instead of waiting another two months, I'll just move the property line to the middle of the road. Big deal where the property line is, okay? It's a private subdivision. To have to wait another two months to get a variance for that is just pushing this thing a little too far down. My window of opportunity here is not a big window here. You know, if I can get this started and get things moving here, maybe we could get rid of this darn thing because it's been a choke on my neck for nine years I've been paying for this property, okay? And it's not fair for me and Bill to go to TRC meeting after TRC meeting after TRC meeting after TRC meeting, have the staff on board. There's only one thing left, the little bit of sidewalk that we can't put in. And he comes in here and gets everybody's head spinning like we're giving you a set of plans that aren't even 20% done, okay? I would submit to this board, the plans are engineered properly, the infrastructure's engineered, it's a private subdivision. I'm not asking for anything more than anybody else would, okay? I'm taking on Spruce Street runoff, so when the city wants to put Spruce Street in there, I've enlarged my ponds and raised my site to adequately accommodate for that, okay? And, you know, the only thing left is to get this little bit of sidewalk waived on Wednesday. So, you know, I'm here to answer any questions. You know, it's not how it sounds with what they came across there. You want to see the plans? There's 23 pages of engineering plans, okay? We've addressed the turnaround. We're putting in a temporary other turnaround for the city. At the last TRC meeting, the fire department said, hey, we want a turnaround at the end of Phase One. What do you want me to do to show the phase line? I mean, how do you think you show phase lines? You put a mark across the plan if you can see it. I mean, I don't know. He was okay with it, okay? And those things have to be addressed now, which we did. You don't wait till the end to change everything like he was talking about. I don't know, you know? But, you know, I'm just asking you to just let us get this approved. Wednesday, we're going to hopefully get the little 10-foot of sidewalk waived, okay? And we're ready, I'm ready to start, you know? Another month or two, I'm ready to give up. I'm telling you. I mean, this thing has just, and it's not their fault, they came in at the tail end of it, but to come in here and act like these are rotten set of plans, I mean, they don't know, he couldn't even find the plans that we gave him. I gave him 15, 20 sets of plans and then he's calling me, where's the plans? I've given you 15, 20 sets. I don't know where y'all put the plans. You know, I've got a landscape plan architect. I've got all these things that are in there. Why you can't find them, you know, don't penalize me here in front of this board and push this thing down another two or three months. I don't have another two or three months. I've been dealing with this thing for nine years, okay? But, and everybody's been helping me here through this whole process. I mean, there ain't nobody that's helped me more than this staff and the Board of the County Commissioners, okay? But for me to sit there and hear that these plans aren't complete is incredible. They are 100% complete. You can ask me any question about the drained line. I'm putting in force main, tying into the city. The city wants me to use reclaimed water. I agreed to that. I mean, how much more, you know? And to come in here and say, these plans are, got a million different things left to fix. I can't figure out what they are. Tell me what they are. If they had all those things wrong with them, do you think this man here would come up here and recommend approval? I don't think so. We were butting heads for two, three months. We finally worked out all our details and he did a good job. He was looking out for the city's interest. And I was, he'll tell you, I was willing to do whatever he wanted me to do. I was willing to give him another five feet if Spruce Street was going to go through. But you know what? Spruce Street is a 40-foot road. That's all they want and it ain't even planning to go through. But I'm still giving them the drainage for the pond, okay? I'm not asking for anything that isn't done properly. I wouldn't come in here with a half, a set of plans that are halfway done. Are you kidding me? Would SWIFT mud give me a permit if those were halfway done? I had the comments over and over, they came, the city kept coming up with new comments, the engineering. What did I do? I could have fought them. I said, no, I'll do, I'll give it to you. I had to put a loop system in for their water. I had to give them a separate system for the fire hydrants. I mean, those plans are complete.
Satisfied.
They're complete.
Gentlemen, what the board is charged with is determining whether your application should be recommended for approval based on the criteria set forth in the city's code relative to site plan approval. This time is your opportunity to present this board evidence concerning that compliance. And I understand your frustration, Mr. Lindiakos. On the other hand, the testimony that you're giving regarding who said what and when, I'm just not sure that it's, I'm not sure I'm going to be able to recommend the board to consider it as substantial evidence of anything other than a process that led us here. I don't know that anyone's, you've characterized a couple of the things that our planning staff has said and frankly, it's. that our planning staff has said, and frankly, it's not substantial evidence of anything other than what they've said. I mean, you have an opportunity now to present your evidence. My suggestion is that you do that, so the Board can ask its questions.
Well, I would submit that the plans are complete. They're approved by SWIFT mud. They're not what it sounded like when we first started this evening. The staff's recommending approval. Let us move forward. The only thing I got left to do is on Wednesday is to get that little bit of sidewalk variance, and that's it, you know? And then, if, once we get started, you know, if the city wants me to move the property line back, I'd come back. It don't matter to me if I put the property line behind the 2-foot curb or not. It's just it was going to cost me another three months. That was my reasoning. You know, let me get started. I'll come and do it. I mean, that's all. I mean, those are, those are good plans.
Yeah. Okay, I know, I just, I just want to say, look, we concur with staff. And I think, at the end of the day, you have staff for a reason. And, I mean, obviously, if they recommend approval, then we just concur with staff. We thank staff for the work they've done with us. The small information I provided you was to address the question of the lot lines, which I think hopefully helps to visualize and understand that what is being created is going to work, that we're not creating some kind of a monster, that, and that this is something that is legal and something that has been accepted by planning staff. And that's all. And we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Don't go away. You'll be getting questions. I mean, you can just be close to it.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, then, Board members are able to ask questions of the applicant and his engineer or agent. Ms. Prodos?
I know Mr. Lindiakos. I've known him for many, many years. He's a fine man. But I have questions on this development. I feel like we're piecemealing it. I would like to ask the attorney legally, taking that line to the middle of the street, legally, we've had, the city has had many, many problems with the one meter and the homeowners association taking over. We went to battle with Point Alexis over it through the years. I don't know what the legal is on that. It just seems to me, Mr. Lindiakos, there's too many loopholes, and we're going to get lost in it. That's how I look at it tonight. And I'm sure you, and you feel that you've complied, and I'm sure you've been through a lot of meetings, but I don't feel it's ready.
What part is not ready? I mean, the meters-
From what the plant, my planner has told me, and the questions, and the feeling I get from Mr. Healy. The road is the number one thing. The meter. If you've been working at it for nine years, it should come up here completed.
It is completed.
No, it's not.
This is not a time for argument. This is a time for asking questions.
No, I'm asking a question. I'm making my statement, sir. You still have to come back. You're only doing part of it. And I want to know, if we give him the okay on part of this, what's going to happen with the other part? What legal steps do we have to protect the development and the city on this? It's being piecemealed. I think, I feel it's being piecemealed. And I've heard what you said.
I don't have a question to answer, other than what is the city's protections? I mean, this is part, and I don't want to get in front of Mr. Healy or Mr. Langdon, but this is a part of a process. The site plan approval at this juncture does not, again, there are no shovels in the ground, and there are no building permits issued as a result of this application.
I wish we had had a work session on this.
You know, and again, the question is a little bit too broad. I mean, certainly, there are, you know, legal ramifications to this application as there are to any application. Again, you've got a recommendation from planning staff to approve the application subject to some stipulations. Again, those are your options. You can approve it. You can recommend approval. You can recommend denial. You can recommend approval with conditions. Certainly, those are within your purview.
Can we defer to come back with this without him having to pay at our next meeting, so we can sit down with staff and go through this?
Yes. Legally, you can do that.
Good. It may not fly, but I just feel there are too many questions and variables in this right now.
Well, I could tell you that the only variable is the sidewalk that's coming up. There's 10-foot of sidewalk we're asking to waive on Wednesday, okay? The engineering, the public's works have been addressed four times with the city. They don't have any more comments, okay? The meter system, they required us to do a separate loop system, so if the homeowners association doesn't pay their bill, they can still have fire to the fire hydrants. We agreed to do that, okay? I don't understand what's not completed here, other than this big list of stuff that he came up with at the beginning, which is 99%, I would submit, not valid.
So, tell me again why you're doing the meter. You're not just doing a straight hookup with the city.
What do you mean? The homeowners association's going to have a separate meter-
I understand what it is.
...to water the roads.
But why did you go that way?
Why? Because the city wanted us to put a loop system where we had a separate system for the fire hydrants that's not, that can be on without the water being on. You follow me? Because I guess they've had problems with these townhomes where the homeowners racked up these water bills. They had, they can't turn the water off because the fire hydrants won't work. So, we went back. We re-engineered it at their request. So, now it's got a system where you can turn off the water to the homeowners association if they don't pay their bill, but the fire hydrants still work, because there's some places in Tarpon that they run into that problem. They got $30,000, $40,000, $50,000 water bills they're never going to collect. So, we did that. We gave them the temporary T round. I mean, we did everything they asked for. He was there. I mean, we've been going through this. The staff was ready to approve this back in August. So, I don't know, you know, what is not complete? I mean, because he gave you one sheet. There's 30 sheets of construction plans to those plants, to the site plants, you know? And time is the essence. I mean, you know? So, I'll answer whatever questions anybody has here. I mean, but-
Well, Mr. Lindiakos, on a lot of these, there are recommendations and things that should be that they've written under here, and that's, you know, they're not answering, and-
The recommendations-
I feel that they should be taken care of before we approve a lot of this.
The recommendations, we agree to. We're going to give them 100-foot. The only thing this is subject to is to the waiver for the sidewalk on Wednesday. And then, the commissioners are going to vote on vacating the right-of-way. That's not an issue for this panel. And everything else, we agreed that we're not going to get a CO on the building until the infrastructure's done. And a million developers do that. And they allowed us to do it in phasing, and my understanding is, is that's been done before. As long as we do it, we finish it within five years. Otherwise, we have to come back. So, we're really asking for the approval of the whole project, but we're doing it in phases.
I'd like to ask Mr. Healy and our planning director a question. Mr. Healy, and our planning director here, our new one, that went through this, do you feel that this is ready for approval? There are too many things, too many questions here.
Ms. Prodos, let me answer it this way, and I am trying to answer your question very specifically. I need to clarify, first of all, there is no disagreement between Mr. Langdon and I about what the staff report says. In all due respect to Manuel, he suggested that he said one thing, and I've said another. That's not so. There are five stipulations listed, the last of which says, "Subject to provision and approval of all other code requirements as referenced above in the staff report." What Josh has done is gone through and identify the list of things that are required as submission for a site plan that he believes aren't adequately completed. And that condition would speak to those. So, the simple answer to your question is, there are details that Josh has outlined that we think need to be complete before the site plan could be finally approved. We're prepared to recommend it be done, subject to those. But there is no disagreement about what needs to be done between staff. And it is more than just this remaining variance on the sidewalk, a few feet in front of the clubhouse. It does have to do with the plan actually being changed, either to move the lot lines to the center line of the street or come back and ask the Board of Adjustment, or the Commission, I'm not sure which it is, for conditional use to allow the diminished, the lesser-than-100-foot lot depth. It is subject to the vacation, as Manuel said, which is the prerogative of the Commission, and completion approval of all the required road and utility improvements relative to the separate phasing of the project. We want to make sure that, however the phasing is to occur, that it's specifically delineated, a timeframe is established, and whatever utility and infrastructure's going to go in for Phase One be complete for that phase, before the homes are built for that phase. We don't want an unfinished project.
All right, I thank you for that. I understand that. My biggest problem is the middle-of-the-street lot line. Is that legal? I'm asking our attorney.
That's your question?
The lot line that he wants to take to the middle of the street, is that legal? Do we do that on other site plans? No.
Yeah, well, it's legal to do. It's been done in the past. I mean, there isn't any, it's their property. If, you know, if they're going to move the lot lines and those property owners decide it's in their best interest to buy property, you know, the first X amount of feet of which are road, that is, in my opinion, their prerogative. It's legal to do.
All right. Should this be approved tonight with all these stipulations that our planner has given us that need to be answered first?
That's a question for the Board, I believe. That's what we're here for.
But I want an answer from the city attorney to come back.
There really is a question for the Board, Ms. Prodos. I'm not trying to dodge your question.
I-
Let me finish.
...your legal ability, sir, on my vote.
My legal ability does not extend to exerting any influence on the members of this Board. What you're charged with doing is evaluating the evidence that's been presented to you tonight and making your decision on that-
If it's legal or not.
Is it legal to approve recommendation with these stipulations? Yes, it is.
Do you feel that these stipulations should be answered first before we do this as our attorney on planning and zoning?
Again, not a question I can answer. That's within the purview of the Board. You know, you have two competing options here, you know? Your applicant is telling you that, if I understand him correctly, I don't put words in his mouth.
We're in agreement with all of his recommendations.
Okay. There you go. Is it legal? It's absolutely legal to approve it with the conditions stipulated.
See, I just don't trust right now, for what's happened in the city, that they're going to be lost in five years, and we're going to go on with this development, take that long, and it's not going to be completed. And I can understand where our new planning director's coming from. It is his job to bring that before us. That's my problem, because we've had too many, not with Mr. Lindiakos, but in developments in the past. And that's my problem with this right now.
Understood, Ms. Prodos, and that's appreciated. My role here, and I'm going to advise you again, as I do from time to time, is simply to evaluate the application, the staff report, the information that you've received from the applicant, based on the competent substantial evidence standard, and make your decision based on it.
May I make a comment?
And you're asking for us to vacate property on Pine Street for you?
Excuse me?
The vacation on Pine Street. Is this for one of your lots?
The two parcels are in between Pine Street, and then, we're requesting a vacation of the Pine Street, which, my understanding is, there's been no objection to it.
In our traffic study, will the city need that portion of Pine Street?
Pine Street goes into a swamp right now.
I understand that, but that portion you want, are we going to need that portion of Pine Street in the future for traffic?
Well, according to the traffic impact study that was put together, the level of service isn't going to change, especially future level of service based on the development. So, with regards to this development in this area, no. There's, the traffic impact study did not indicate that Pine Street would be needed to maintain this level of service currently or in the future.
It's my understanding that Spruce Street, at one point, is going to go through right there. It's already done halfway, if you know where it is.
It's going to go through, yeah.
And again, I'm taking on all of Spruce Street's runoff, which is going to help the city, because they don't have any property to put their pond. I'm making their pond for them to cover all of Spruce Street, okay? And I can, you know, answer any of the questions you got. I mean-
Okay, well, we have other Board members that have questions.
Yeah, I'll listen to what they say.
Ms. Prodos, do you have any other questions?
Ma'am?
I want to hear what the other Board members-
Ma'am, I believe you also asked me the same question that Mr. Healy answered. And just to clarify, in the interest of fairness and redundancy, the site plan contents, I'll remind you that I did qualify many of the site plan deficiencies that I noted, particularly for the one with the proposed utility, sanitary sewer, potable water, location of fire hydrants. I did say, I believe that most of the utilities were in place.
What page are you on?
I'm sorry, this is, site plan contents, B, following items be addressed prior to final subdivision plot approval, four, the first one. I did say that I had a question as to whether all the fire hydrants were in place or not, just part of that sentence. And that, again, might be, as our applicant pointed out, the fact that we have changed staff. There's numerous minutes to review. There's numerous TRC comments to review. I simply wasn't confident enough to simply scratch that one out. It may, it may be satisfied. I'm not an engineer. I did the best I could, and I simply was not 100% on that, although it may be 99%, it may be 100%. I did the best I could on that one. Seven, I did say a tree survey has been submitted, and engineering has said it is complete, and it is indeed our fault that it has not been reviewed. So, the applicant is correct there. Eleven, a table of land uses showing the total area. That is not there, but it's a table. A table can be inserted. It's a simple matter of lining up a few numbers showing their total area breakdown.
It's in the plans. You're just not looking at the right page.
Let him finish, please.
Um, lot dimensions, not there. But again, it's a matter of labeling. All they have to do is have their engineer, surveyor, put the labels on it. So, it's not as scary as it sounds. Proposed phasing plan, he has a phasing plan, because he shows, clearly shows where the phasing are. We just don't have an anticipated commencement and completion date. Again, I think that's, it's a date. It can be come up with. Card parking calculations, that's actually a pretty simple calculation. They haven't put it there that I could see, but it's going to be basically, you know, two cars per house. It's going to be a simple calculation. Site lighting, I didn't see. Maintenance of common facilities, I didn't see. But again, that's a paragraph stating that when we put together the homeowners association, you know, the bylaws will contain. And again, we don't really look for bylaws and maintenance language until subdivision plan review, because that's generally when you put that together. Finally, location type, proposed signs. It's the subdivision sign. So, on the one hand, yeah, there are deficiencies. On the other hand, I thought it was characterized that we'd somehow butchered the plan. And I'm trying to say, we have not butchered the plan. We do have deficiencies, most of which I have qualified as a deficiency. Landscaping plan, we fully acknowledge. Even the code says, we don't even need to see one until there's a certificate before, certificate of occupancy. So, I do stand by my report. I just wanted to qualify everything I said by saying, there may be some issue with transition of staff and reviewing of multiple minutes over years and years, but I simply did the best I could, did the best of my ability, and I honestly answered these as best I could.
You did very well.
Can I ask you something? I want to apologize. I'm not trying to take it out on him, but, you know-
You're frustrated.
You know, you'd have to go through this experience to have a plan being recommended by, on one hand, by the, the staff, and then it, it sounds like the whole plan screwed up. I apologize to you, don't take it personally, but I can satisfy the, the little sign requirements. They want me to put a sign that says, no parking on the street, a couple of other things that the fire department wants, you know, no parking on the side street. You know, I, I can do that by the next Board of County Commission meeting if you want. You know, it's, I'm prepared to start as soon as I get the permit. I got my funding in place. Okay, Phase One is going to start, if you want to know the time. As soon as you give me the permit, you're going to start seeing the trees getting mowed down, we're going to get that first building up.
Wrong word.
Hoops.
Wrong word.
We're replacing all those trees, by the way.
Okay, Mr. Lindiakis, we haven't finished with Board questions of the applicant. Mr. Hawes, you've been patient and waiting. It's your turn.
That one threw me up. I've been down that road. So Anita, are you afraid that this, just only one certain phase, and then they go broke and nothing else happens? Is that one of your-
That's one of a few.
Okay.
That's one of a few that I'm concerned about. And I know he's worked hard on it, but I'm also worried, over a five-year period, things change in the city. Issues can get lost.
Well, like nine years with him.
You know, and things can happen. But nine years with him, the first of the nine years, he didn't pursue this. He's had the property. And I understand that. He had to get himself organized, money together, and all of that. But to me, to come before this Board, it should have everything answered and be ready to go, not with issues attached to it. That's my problem.
And do you have questions of the applicant?
No, just, I've been down this road before in Newport Ritchie, so I, I, I certainly feel your pain. I, I would just say that, that the property is engineered as two individual sites. I mean, the, the lift station that's going to be put in is going to sustain Phase Two, and Phase Two's going to have its own stormwater runoff, with the exception of it popping into, into the pond on Phase One. So they're two independent sites. And you know, that's why, you know, I got this small opportunity to get this thing done, and, and I have been working on it for the last few years, because with the, with the fall of the economy and all that, we had to change the zoning, we tried to do this, we tried to do that. And then luckily now, this product is available, I mean, people are buying these townhouses, but how long they're going to be buying them for, I don't know, you know? But I'm willing to start, I'm willing to put every dime I got into it. That's all I'm asking, is to start. I, I agree with all their conditions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindiakis.
Any other questions?
Any other questions of the applicant?
No, sir.
Okay. If you want to have a seat, please. There's no members of the public here, other than the applicant, so I assume that there's no one to speak either in favor of or opposing from the members of the public. So I declare the public hearing portion closed. It's now time for the Board to deliberate on this application and consider any motion.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Healy has one more item he'd like to raise for the benefit of the applicant.
You know, as staff, we sit here and listen to the exchange, both the applicant's presentation, the Board's questions and concerns. One alternative, if the, well, let me say it first, first of all, it's the applicant's prerogative to ask the Board to vote on what's in front of it, up or down, however you choose to do that, and that's certainly their prerogative. An alternative, because we've identified conditions that they have indicated they're agreeable to, would be to make those changes and bring it back to the Board so you could see those changes, so you could see the lot lines where they proposed to put them. So we could address the details that Josh has pointed out, and that those things would not go forward to the Commission with the same perhaps lack of clarity or understanding, but would be defined on what went forward to them. So I only offer that as some middle ground, some way of attempting to satisfy the legitimate questions the Board has raised, to try and, and address the needs of the applicant to move forward. But I fear we get to the Commission and have these same issues not attended to, and I, my preference would be to see the Board satisfied that what you sent forward is as complete and to your satisfaction as, as the applicant can make it now. Maybe he can't and isn't willing to, that's his call, but for what it's worth.
And if not, then it goes another month before he'll have to bring this back again to show these recommendations, and another month goes by.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Healy, and since we allowed you a few minutes rebuttal, if you'd like to come on forward, Mr.?
Bill Conrad, or?
Conrad, yes, thank you.
I, I think probably, given what's gone on, I think obviously, you know, Manuel wants to work with the city. I've, I've been a land planner, I'm a doctor in planning, and I, you know, work with many cities, and I think probably the best thing to do is to, is to delay this vote and to take some time and to address the concerns, because, you know, we believe that when we do that, that everybody will develop a comfort level, so, yes.
No, I was just thinking about something. A motion for you, go ahead.
Okay, no, and I, and I think probably that is the best direction, because we don't, we don't want to cram anything down anybody's throat, and I don't think that's right. And I think the issues that have been raised are, are honest and sincere issues. Obviously, you have the interest of the city, there's always a balance, you know, the rights of the, the owner, and so I think maybe, at this point in time, the best decision, I, I, I thank Mr. Healy for recommend, for bringing that option forward, is, is for us to continue this, and, and you had mentioned maybe a work session where we can address those issues where everyone understands clearly and has a comfort level, and I think that's probably the best, best option. Manuel, you agree?
I vote for it.
No, you do, but I think that's the wise thing to do.
I was supposed to be approved in August. City was on board, everybody was on board, and now, you know-
Mr. Lindiakis, if you want to come up and speak, we need the microphones, so you can be on the record, please.
I need some help for this.
You know, I've been working on this thing with the new staff since August, after everybody took off, okay? Prior staff was ready to approve everything. The problem I have is, why didn't they tell me this two months ago, instead of saying, okay, we'll come and, you know, I pushed it to get in front of you guys, because I figured you could reason through this. I mean, I don't see how much, how many things I left out. And if we make them conditions, I'm going to have to put them in, or else I'm going to be putting a million dollars into the property and I can't get a CO. It's not like you don't have any controls over this thing, where you're thinking everything's going to get lost, and then I'm going to go out there and do whatever I want. I'm not going to do whatever I want. You know, and another month, another month's going to be another month, and another month's going to be another month. It's going to be too late.
Let me address that, Mr. Lindiakis, and certainly understanding of your dilemma and respectful of your position. Neither previous staff nor present staff has, then or now, the, the authority to approve anything. They would have had to come here and then to the Board of Commissioners. I understand your frustration of having gone through the process for a long time. Nevertheless, neither staff had the, the ability or the authority under the city's codes to approve anything, so you, you'd have needed to come here first and understand your frustration. Nevertheless, your options are, again, the Board is able to defer the application, they can recommend approval, they can recommend denial, they can recommend approval with conditions, again, or they can, they can defer it. Now, you have the option, of course, of moving forward to the Board of Commissioners, at whatever, at however you believe this Board will vote tonight, and that recommendation will be what goes before the Board of Commissioners, who ultimately can make the decision. I just want to make sure there's options, and I shouldn't even characterize them as options. If the Board elects to defer the application, that is within their purview. If they elect to move forward on the application, that is within their purview as well. Mr. Healy simply wanted to raise it as a, as a possibility, to the extent that it would provide additional assurances both to this Board and to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lindiakis, Mr. Conrad, for your input. I have one question for the city attorney. Now that we have one member who's been recused from this consideration on this application, that leaves-
Three of us.
-three Board members.
Correct.
So how many votes would be needed to take action?
All of them. You would need three.
So it needs to be unanimous, one way or whatever the motion is?
Whatever motion needs to happen, needs to be unanimous in the vote, or it does, or it does not pass.
I have a question with that.
Yes.
What if we each decide we wanted each one of those options, that we have three different people here and we have three different opinions? What happens?
Well, I'd say, first thing I'm going to do is ask for a break, so I can call my wife and tell her I'm going to be late. Now, I, I mean, ideally, you're going to need to come to a decision at some point. You know, the first one to the motion table is, is the first one that'll be, that'll be voted on, and we'll be here till we get a, a motion that has three votes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to entertain a motion that we defer this without Mr. Tiliakis having to pay to come back here or anything for, till next, till December meeting, because, and we can get with Mr. Healy and our planning director and get our questions answered. I have questions right now on some of this. It's, I think it's the impact of the presentation that may have hit me wrong, and the things that haven't really been answered. So I'd like to ask the Board to defer this till December, and he will definitely get an answer from us in December to continue to go ahead and let us sit down with the planning department and go through this.
Okay, it's a motion to defer for, till next month?
Yes, and-
Is there a second on the motion?
We are a developer, sir, I'm not, and I look at the legal capacity for the city on this, with the buck starting right here.
Well, we don't need to get into any discussion, the motion. We, we're waiting for a second, we don't have a second. If we don't have a second, then the motion, uh-
You want a second or not?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion, a second to defer, now we're, comments on the motion appropriate? Mr. Hawes, do you have any comments you wish to make on the motion, or on the application?
I think the applicant has addressed all the issues that we've brought up, and, but I understand Anita, she's been at the city for a long time and understands a lot more what's happened here than I do, and I have to, you know, she's a wise person.
I don't think so.
So I, well, in some opinions, then, but, no, I, I think that even with your recommendation, I think at this point, it's probably the best way to do it, so all questions are answered. Personally, I think they have been answered, but I, I think it's a, a good idea.
Ms. Protas, you've already made some comments. Do you wish you'd make more comments before we take a vote? Any discussion?
One question, not a comment. What are the sizes of these dwellings?
I don't think it says what the size of the dwellings are.
Three guys, we're going to have that.
How many square feet?
Point two hundred thirty square feet, living space, not counting garages.
Point two hundred what?
Point two hundred thirty square feet.
Well, we presume that they're within whatever's required by the zoning. I don't think there's many changes in the zoning, so it's whatever the, at least minimum requirements for the zoning. My comments are that I, I'm sorry that the staff changeover has affected you, Mr. Lindiakis, and your application. I know that's frustrating, it's something beyond our control, but as a Board, we have to deal with what comes to us, and I know that process has been affected by turnover in staff, and, and that's something that none of us can do anything about, and I'm sorry, and I understand your frustration. I agree with Ms. Protas in a number of respects, and it may be just because you said that plans, they couldn't find the plans. This is the first time I've had a site plan that's just all been consolidated on one sheet, and I don't know if that's just because to save paper and, and all the duplication process, but normally in site plans, we have all the detailed drawings, all the engineering drawings to review, but-
You can, you can say something.
I, I hear you. I heard, I heard you say that, and I, I understand your frustration. But we do need to have a comfort level, and, and there are some issues that hopefully will be worked out, and it sounds like some of them, or most of them, aren't, aren't major, and so I hope we can move forward. Well, let's go ahead and take a motion, a vote on the motion. Motion to defer.
Nils Hasey?
Yes.
Anita Protas?
Yes.
Merlin Seaman?
Recused.
That's right. Chairman, Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
I feel like I've lost a friend tonight, Manuel, I'm sorry, but I have to add my questions.
Uh, that concludes this item on the agenda. We have a few other items. Ms. Protas, don't go away, we're not going to-
No, I'm not getting my papers together. No, I'm not through yet.
The next item on the agenda is item seven, discussion items, meeting dates for January and February of 2015. Ms. Lemmons?
Yes, hi, thank you. We wanted to bring up the discussion of the meetings for January and February. As you know, planning and zoning meets the third Monday of each month. The third Monday in January happens to be Martin Luther King holiday, and the third Monday in February happens to be President's Day. So City Hall is not open on either of those dates. So we need to move the planning and zoning meeting either to the 12th of January, which would be the, the Monday before, and in February, we could move it the Monday before, which would be the ninth. I don't know if there's any feelings one way or the other, if you'd like to move the meetings up or back. Traditionally, we've moved them forward. This gives the applicants about four or five weeks in between. If we move the meetings back, it would be a six-week gap between the December meeting and the January meeting, which is a little bit too much. We'd like to keep them as, as even as possible. So if there's, staff recommendation would be to move the planning and zoning meeting for January to the second Monday in January, which would be the 12th, and to the second Monday in February, which would be the ninth.
Okay, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Is there a motion to?
So move to accept the recommendation.
A second. There's a motion, a second, to accept the city's recommendation for January and February meetings to be held January 12th and February the 9th of 2015. Any other comments before we take a vote? Take a vote?
Nils Hasey?
Yes.
Anita Protas?
Yes.
Merlin Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Lemmons. The next item on the agenda is staff comments. Am I going to, any questions or comments? This is your time, I guess, Mr. Healy, since you're here, you're welcome to comment, too, if you'd like.
I have no comments.
Next item is Board comments. Ms. Protas, we'll start back over here.
Yes, at our last meeting, when we had the Bay Shore development before us, we discussed Eunice Drive, and I had asked that the Board send, to the, to the Board of Commissioners, the recommendation that Eunice Drive would be opened, and they presented it that we, what was the word they used? They would consider opening Eunice Drive. And my understanding is that we were sending the recommendation and made the vote that Eunice Drive be opened. I have not had the opportunity to kind of listen to the tape, it may be my mistake, but when I heard what they said, I said, no, the meaning was in the motion that we recommend that Eunice be opened. So I don't, you and I, Mr. Chairman, you and I are the only ones here that was there.
I guess so.
So do you remember how the motion went?
I was looking for someone else, but no one else was here but you and I.
No, just us. I'm going to come up and listen to the tape.
My, my recollection of that, and of course, my recollection, recollection isn't perfect, but it was discussed about the, the desires of whether or not to put it through, and I believe that the applicant indicated that they would be happy if the city paid for it while their contractor was there doing the other street work, because then it would save the city money.
Yes.
And, and so I think there was a general consensus that, that we thought that would, that the Board should consider that. But I don't remember that being a part of the motion, but you can go back and listen to the tape.
Yeah, I'm going to listen and see how it was stated and what was said.
Okay.
Because now I have questions, and I'm going to get an attorney about giving away the right of ways on the impact fees and transportation impact fees, because it's very important. It's a safety factor that Eunice be open for the residents out there, because they have no other way to get out during severe storms.
Okay.
So, I didn't know if you remembered, but I will listen to the tapes and see.
Any other comments?
Yes, I want to thank the Board for deferring this last issue. Mr. Healy and our planning director, I'm coming over with my calendar to see when I can come and sit down and talk to you about some of these issues I have. can come and sit down and talk to you about some of these issues I have. And I want to thank our new planning director for his presentation tonight, and Mr. Healy, I suggest you stay another year with us to help us. I'll feed you Greek food if you'll do that.
Perfect.
And I do depend on my attorney for the city here to give me legal advice on what to do here in the city, because I've seen too many problems with developments in the city in the past, and maybe that's a bad thing, you know? I'm not here to appease the developer, I'm not here to make him happy, I'm here to work for the city and get the best that I can for Tarpin Springs.
Thank you. Mr. Seaman, any comments on your first meeting here?
And this...
Welcome to the board.
This may be premature, and I don't, you know, I don't even know the procedures yet, but in some other places where I've been, there would have been like an agenda session or something where issues like this were resolved before bringing them before the full commission for a vote, and I would suggest that, at least in some cases, if not in all cases, something like that might be worth considering, despite the fact that none of us have time to go to more meetings, but if we can avoid holding somebody up in a situation like this by doing it, it's fair to the people we represent.
I think what you're referring to is the, it happens in the TRC, the Technical Review Committee, which is various staff that go over these, and then you saw the notes and some of that, so a lot of that is hashed out before it comes before our board, among the Technical Review Committee, which has representatives from all the departments affected in the city, and so usually, there's more of a consensus when it comes before the board.
Well, maybe sometimes something like this, Mr. Chairman, the city needs the TRC, in some way, we need to have a work session. I remember in your day on the board, we used to have city commission work sessions, sessions, if you remember.
I do remember.
And they did have work sessions on big developments with the Planning and Zoning Board back then.
I don't remember the Planning and Zoning having any, but the city commission did have work sessions, I remember those from time to time. That was a long time, you've got a good memory. That was twenty-some years ago.
Because I used to go to them now.
Thirty, almost thirty years ago.
Yes, they did have them, and it helps. I like your recommendation.
Mr. Hawes? Welcome to the board, and would you care to share any comments?
No, it's been fun, thanks. I'm looking forward to the next ones.
Exciting.
Wow. Nice to have fresh blood here.
That's an interesting definition of fun. I want to clarify for the board also, Mr. Langen is the city's principal planner, I think we've hired a director, correct, who began today?
Yes.
Wonderful, so hopefully we'll see him soon, and I know that we have new members on the board, and I wanted to let, you got, I don't know if y'all have watched the videotape at the direction of the clerk that's online, I'm happy to send you an email link to it.
I got a PowerPoint presentation.
That might be the same one that the former city attorney Yakavon did about a year and a half ago. Okay, running through quasi adjuvants.
That's a good point, thank you, Mr. Daniel, that for the new members of the board and a refresher for the older members, it would be good to review those information on conflict of interest issues, and the other issues, government and sunshine issues.
Precisely, and please feel free to reach me in the office at any time with any questions that you have on either, any of those topics that are going to affect your work on the board, because obviously, especially when we get into a situation like tonight where we have, you know, four of seven members and two new members, it's, it becomes a little bit, a little bit, can become a little bit sticky. Y'all did a nice job tonight, but please don't hesitate to reach me with questions or concerns at all.
When is our December meeting, on the 22nd?
Question is, when is our December meeting?
It's December the 15th, I think.
Fifteen? Fifteen?
The 15th. So we ought to get up there before that.
Yes, that's what I have on my calendar, also. In the way of comments, since we do have new staff here, I don't know what was left behind by the leaving staff about what we've been dealing with in the past. One item that this board has been encouraging the city to develop is a outdoor lighting ordinance, and so I don't know if that has made any progress, we've, there's of course a model ordinance by the Dark Sky Association, if I remember right, and so we've looked at that, we've discussed it, we haven't real, and so if that's not on your things-to-do list, if you would, add that to your things-to-do list.
I'm an amateur astronomer myself, so I'm...
Well, good, then, you'll be in favor of...
Fully supportive.
And since the, in fact, this last site plan that we had here, you know, didn't have lighting, and that's something I think this board wants to take a look at, and I hope the city commission does, is the type of outdoor lighting that is put in, because, you know, at least personally, I believe there's, you know, we have a great excess in outdoor lighting, a lot of glare, if you go down Anclot Road near Mr. Seaman's place, a couple places, there's a big old floodlight that shines right down on Anclot Road, and if you're going towards the river, you know, it's almost blinding, and it's there maybe for security reasons, but it shouldn't be shining, you know, it should be shielded from the street, and I think that's an issue that we've discussed here in the past, and we haven't seen much fruition in it, so if you add that to your list, I'd appreciate it, and I'm sure there'll be other things that come up. Any other comments? Is there a motion adjourned?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
I'm going to bring in a warmer rain shoe.
I think the rain was about done, hopefully.
I have a question. And so, as I just mentioned, December 13th, I think I'm probably in December 13th. February 12th, I may be. So what happened?
I'd like to see you. If you forget, and you want me to get up the tickets, I can get the old...
I won't know.
But call Linda, and she'll tell you.
Yeah.
It's, uh-huh.
At what time?
It's, I guess it's at 6:00.
Yeah, yeah.
It's at the yacht club. Our Martha Roberts, you can give the money to her, call her, but Linda's number is 937.
Oh, I just can't wait for that one.
1010.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know Martha, but I was thinking the other day.
Well, I'll check our calendars, and I, we've enjoyed going to those in the past.
Oh, I have too.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, it's... Good job, Bill.
You did a very good job.
Appreciate you being on the board, I saw when this email came around, it's like, because I didn't follow it, and they don't know. I saw your name, right? Because I knew you were one of the ones with the most interest, because I did see that...
Perhaps even you and Mr. Healy are here so I can come and sit with you.
It is. Sometimes we get out of here, because it's really, 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 I mean, of course, with the economy, we've had fewer applications this past year, like a couple years ago.